Good evening. This is the December 8th meeting of the Select Board. And to those of you who are wondering, where is the Chair Heather Hamilton? She's otherwise engaged tonight. We weren't as a Select Board necessarily prepared for the possibility that we might be meeting on a Thursday at this week in December. And she happens to have made a commitment which she's she's going to honor tonight. And we're going to have, I think, a very short meeting. We'll see. I'm John Van Skoek and I'm the Vice Chair. And we're going to wrap up this meeting. Certainly with time to spare for us to then join the special town meeting night eight, I believe it is, which is convening at 7:00 P. M. So for the for the members of the board who were here, and does anyone have an announcement that they would like to make at this time? And seeing none, I'll make a brief announcement. In part to flatter our town administrator and our town administrative staff. And that is to let people know that the second monthly Town Hall newsletter is out. And for those who haven't seen it yet, all they need to do is to go to the Brooklyn Town of Brooklyn website. And they will see the information as to they'll they'll actually see a link to it, but they'll also see some information as to how they can sign up to receive it by email. And I'm going to share something that our town administrator might not be aware of, and that is in my own newsletter, which I put out occasionally. I put information in the newsletter this week as to how people could read Chaz's or I should say the town administrative staff's newsletter. And it was the most clicked on thing in my newsletter. So that was kind of humbling for me, but I hope that I hope that it is something that the is rewarding for for Chaz and for others, Devin, in particular, who I don't think is here tonight. So then on to public comment, and we'll see if anybody is here to make public comment. If so, it's an opportunity to hear the perspective of our guests on issues in Brookline that matter to them. There's a few rules. Each person speaking tonight limited to three minutes. Don't need to use the entire time. You may, if you like, refrain from personal attacks, please, and from addressing personnel issues. And if you raise questions, we'll do our best to answer them. And if we don't have an answer, we'll get back to you with an answer. And of course, the public is always welcome to send email to board members and to the board as a whole. So Kate, do we have anyone for public comment? And Miriam has joined us, so that's good news. I'm not hearing Kate. Is anybody else hearing Kate at this point?
Yeah.
Kate, anybody?
We don't have any folks that have their hands raised or who are using the Q and A feature.
And that's I'm speaking, is it?
That's correct. John, how you doing?
I'm doing fine. We've gotten in the habit at town meeting that anybody who speaks has to introduce themselves first, so.
Right. I'm Charlie Young. I'm the town's Assistant Town Administrator of Finance.
Thank you, Charlie Young. And I'm sorry to hear there's no public comments. Sometimes that's my favorite part of the meeting. So we will go on to the miscellaneous agenda. Which in usual fashion, I'm going to start with minutes and we'll do that vote separately, and then we will go to the other, I think it's one item or maybe two in the miscellaneous agenda. So do any of the members of the board have anything to, any questions to raise or changes to make in the meeting minutes from December 6?
Some. It says, yeah.
Oh, it is. It says six in my script, and I think
It's Tuesday. Yeah.
Tuesday. No, no changes from anyone. All right, then. If we could, I would like us to just vote, starting with Bernard.
All right.
And Miriam.
Hi.
And Mike.
Hi.
Great.
And just my apologies. I had to take my child to the doctor and I'm in the car while he's with the doctor.
Oh, well, be safe, okay?
Oh, that we're parked. I'm parked.
Oh, okay.
John, you're going to vote?
And I vote aye, and thank you, Mike, for reminding me. All right, then, we have voted on the minutes from December 6. And we will now move on to item 3B, which is the question of approving the authorization request for a vacancy within the Building Department for an Energy Systems Manager. And I believe we have Dan Bennett here to read a memo.
I'm sorry, Dan actually couldn't be here, but he wanted he wanted to ask if one of the board members might consider reading, or we can read it. It's up to you.
Chaz, if you don't mind, have you got it in front of you?
I do. So
Honor, all right?
Sure. So this is a memo from our our department head, Dan Bennett, regarding this position and why it's vacant. He says he respectfully requests authorization to hire for the Energy Systems Manager position, which will become vacant in early January 2023 due to retirement. This position is extremely important to the proper operation and maintenance of the town's energy management systems. I, and I would say we, all of us town staff, would like to take this opportunity to recognize and give a sincere thank you to Mark Sacco, the EMS manager, for his dedicated 26 years with the town. Mark was one of the first administrative hires after the Public Buildings Division was created four years earlier. He came from the private sector with over 20 years of building HVAC experience. Mark has been responsible for all the HVAC systems, plus overall control, programming, maintenance, and upgrades to all the town's energy management systems. He was part of the division that was responsible for 90 buildings. He took on this responsibility in great stride and made the town and school buildings function more efficiently and comfortably for the occupants. He answered calls day and night throughout the long cold winters and came into work the next morning to meet the day's challenges. He saved the town an untold amount of energy usage and money through his detailed operations of the EMS and HVAC systems. He made great accomplishments with the modernization and expansion of those systems. He also managed the tradesmen's staff in the division, who include various electricians, plumbers, HVAC personnel, and numerous outside contractors. With his vision and attitude towards getting the job done well, he was able to make the division a stronger organization and provide better service to the residents of Brookline and the users of our public buildings. Mark has always been a source of strong experience and helps to make staff and contractors more knowledgeable. Building Department and the town of Brookline is incredibly grateful to Mark for all that he has done to make the town a better place. Mark will truly be missed, and his departure from the town will be a great opening to the next chapter in his life. Thank you, Mark, for all the work that you've done for us.
Terrific. Thank you, Town Administrator Chaz Carey, for reading that. And I think I sense a topic for a feature in your next newsletter, the Town Hall next newsletter, so. That's that's just to make a note for that possibility. I know we're always looking for good copy. So any any comments from board members on this?
No, I move that we authorize the position hiring.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those, I'll read it one more time. Question of approving the authorization request for a vacancy within the Building Department for an Energy Systems Manager, and that is designated T 09. And all those in favor, starting with Bernard?
Aye.
And Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the Vice Chair votes aye as well. All right. So moving on to the calendar. The one item that we have on the calendar is for revisiting of any Warren articles or visiting of Warren articles that we haven't sort of finished discussing. And the one article that we have in front of us is Article 37, which is a petition to to add some Advisory Committee Oversight to review of the school budget. And I know Lee Sell, one of the Advisory Committee, was the the person who most, you know, was involved in the petitioning of this article. Is Lee here?
Lee is being promoted now.
Good. Thank you, Kate.
Leave, you've been promoted to a panelist.
Okay.
Hello, Lee, how are you?
Afternoon, everyone.
Good. Good to see you. Thank you for taking time out. Why don't you go ahead and tell us what is behind this petition?
Do you want me to talk just about the amendment that we submitted the other day or about the the whole article?
Oh, I think it'd be useful to have a refresher on the whole article, if you can, you know, keep that to reasonable length, and then give us the the gist of the change.
Well, you know, several of you, of course, have have served on the Advisory Committee and and, you know, are familiar with Advisory Committee's budget process. And as a general matter, you know, we have, we are typically handed the school budget. And are then asked basically to work around it with respect to the town side budget. The school budget is governed in large part by the so-called Town School Partnership. And it and basically what is left of the total town budget is available for the other departments. And what we've noticed over a series of budget cycles, many going back a number of years, is that the town side, that the school side has been getting an increasingly larger portion of the overall town budget. And what the town departments are finding themselves squeezed and are experiencing situations where they believe, and we've heard this from department heads, that they are really not able to fulfill their mission to the extent that they'd like. They're not able to pay competitive salaries. They're not able to attract staff. They're not able to do various, perform various functions. And so I spent a good deal of time this past summer doing a deep dive into the 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 school and town budgets and financial plans for the past eight or nine years. And I thank Melissa for some of her help on this. And I don't know if it would be useful, I can run through very quickly the slides I'm going to use tonight. That might, if you can let me share my screen.
How do other members feel about that? Folks want to see a few slides?
Let's see the slides, but I do think, Lee, that we need to
Well, then let me let me not do that.
Make it short.
But you're limited in time, and so Mike is having an AC meeting at 6:00. But what we wanted to try to do was to come up with a means by which the Advisory Committee, which which has ultimate and Town Meeting, has responsibility for the entire budget, not just the town side budget. And Jocelyn Murphy will be discussing that this evening. We wanted to be able to put and examine the school budget in a manner that that puts it in in the same plane as the rest of the town budgets. We want to be able to evaluate priorities. And in the same way that that we and the Town Administrator and Town Meeting make judgments as to allocations of what I would call the town side portion of the budget among town departments based on their needs and priorities. We wanted to be able to include the schools in that same analysis. So what we've, what we did was we thought we were taking, taking really a baby step, which I think some of the comments on the list serve have blown way out of proportion. What we are proposing is that Town Meeting, and we've submitted a resolution that that has would have Town Meeting request the AC to develop a plan for an examination of the school budget in the context of its part of the town budget that we would develop a scope of a potential consultant report. We would develop a proposed budget. And we would develop an RFP. And all of this material would be submitted to Town Meeting in the spring for Town Meeting to review and either approve, reject, modify, whatever. But we're not asking for any money now. And people who are suggesting we're asking for half a million dollars, I don't have any idea where that number came from, but sure didn't come from us.
It's in the Warren article.
Yeah.
Is it in the Warren article?
No, it's in the Advisory Committee Report.
It's in the Advisory Committee Report as what, an estimate or?
Estimate that it would cost $200,000 to $500,000.
$200,000 to $500,000, okay.
Well, that 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 I was asked for an estimate, and I think I said 250. I don't know where the 500 came from, but it's possible I said that as well. And that was just an order of magnitude. We are not asking for any money now. And all we're trying to do is to come up with a process by which Advisory and hence and through Advisory Town Meeting can make informed judgments on the relative priorities of the of all of the town responsibilities, not just the not just the schools, not just, sorry, not just the town side.
Okay, Lee, thank you very much. And we're going to do a couple of things here. I'm going to open it up to see if there's questions from board members. I just, before I do that, just to quickly set some context, in case people are kind of wondering what the context is for all of this. Those who have followed the Select Board this Town Meeting season, this pre-Town Meeting season, know that we did not take positions on all articles. We took positions on some, didn't take positions on others. This is the one of the ones we had not taken a position on, but one of the things we're going to do after some questions is decide, do we want to take a position? And then if we do, then we'll go ahead and take a vote on a position on this. So that's the context. And now, do any board members have?
John, before you before you do that, can I just, I neglected to mention the amendment that that we offer.
Yeah, please bring that up right now.
For up for discussion at AC tonight. We added a few words to the to the description of of what we're what we're suggesting the Advisory Committee undertake.
And you just decided that tonight, right?
No, a couple of days ago, we
A couple of days ago. Go ahead. What is what are the words?
And what what these additional few words say is that we're we're, we would be working in consultation with the school committee. So basically, we're not, we never intended this to be an adversarial situation between AC and the school committee. And we inserted that additional language, which I expect that AC will will endorse tonight as a friendly amendment. We inserted that additional language to make it clear that we 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 want school committee input. We want school committee participation and cooperation.
Okay, I think that's pretty clear to everybody. Folks, do you want to raise hands if you have questions for Lee? Bernard, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess my main question is, you know, why do we need a new or need a a review by an outside consultant when we have procedures in place already, including the Advisory Committee's role in reviewing the budget, which, you know, maybe they're not doing a good enough role, but you know, that's, you know, their problem and could be resolved by them. And we have things like Town School Partnership. We have plenty of opportunity to do the deep dive that you're talking about, at least deep enough to, you know, get the information that we're entitled to have.
Let me try to respond. The first, the Town School Partnership is basically an ad hoc function. It has never been adopted as a policy of the town or of or been supported or adopted by Town Meeting. It arose through a memorandum that was initiated in approximately 1995 between the then Town Administrator and the then Superintendent. So, you know, it's not really ever been clear to me how what its role is in the budget process, but it seems to be able to establish the the school budget in terms of the aggregate amount. What is missing from the process and that is that because the school budget is essentially delivered to us, we don't have any real input into its magnitude. And Town Meeting, although Town Meeting has no responsibility, and in fact is statutorily concluded from dictating line item or addressing line item components of the school budget, Town Meeting and not not the school committee or the school department is responsible for the aggregate amount of money that is allocated to the schools. And and we are not in a position to evaluate priorities that drove the school budget to whatever level it is, vis a vis priorities of town side departments. And so what we're trying to do is to come up with a mechanism that would accomplish that. And and the reason we propose the consultant is because we think that this is a complex job and it may require more time than volunteers could put in. But it's not intended to, the town's priorities are different than the school's priorities, because the town's priorities embrace all of the town's activities, not just one department. And AC needs to address that comprehensively.
Thank you for that answer. Mike Salmon, you had your hand up at one point.
Yeah, I withdraw. Thank you.
You're gonna let it pass? Okay.
Yeah, I am. Yeah, I think I yes.
Miriam is going to step in, so that's good. Miriam, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, John. So I have lots and lots of, I don't know where to start. I have so many issues with this. Bernard's comments are spot on, and you didn't frankly answer them, in my opinion. We we have, in fact, I totally disagree. I think the town and the schools absolutely have the same goals and bottom line. And the schools are an integral part of what makes Brookline such a valuable community, both for families, for housing prices. Really, it's a piece of the fabric of Brookline. And and what I just don't understand why the Advisory Committee needs a consultant to do something that, A, the school committee, the the school Superintendent Gilroy already has a consultant working with them, that the school committee is elected to do. And so there's just, and 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 some of the things that I've heard heard with my own ears, listening to you talk in terms of MECO and materials and pieces, first of all, MECO brings money to Brookline.
That is not true.
That is true. It's absolutely true. It is absolutely true. And this is part of the problem. We get money for MECO. And when we don't use it all, we can use it for other things. But you know what? This is part of the problem, right? You you and AC want to do this review, and yet you yourselves don't actually know how the system works. So I have a real hard time supporting this, and I'll be voting no. Thank you.
All right. And I just want to remind everyone, I was hoping that this first part would be just for questions for Lee, but you know, I don't need to say that more than once. Bernard, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Now we're hearing you, I think.
Sorry, I muted because I got a phone call.
Yeah.
Now, what was I gonna say? The I forgot now.
Let me put it this way. Do you have a question, or do you want to?
No, I have a question, but I just want to preface it by saying, yeah, I, yeah, I think that part of what's underlying the Warren article is that everyone's frustrated with the school committee. They're kind of obtuse, I guess is the right word, many times. And many times they throw in our face that they're an independent body, so shut up. I think that that's a problem, and that's why we have, you know, Warren articles like this coming up, which I don't think are appropriate, but you know, are a reaction to the sort of attitude of the school committee, which is improving, you know, now that we have a stable superintendent, but you know, that's sort of the history. I guess the other thing is, you know, the schools do have different priorities from the town. You know, they have federal and state laws that that define their obligations to kids' safety and to equal treatment of kids with disabilities and women, et cetera. And, you know, there are other priorities that relate to the role that schools in any community play, not only to maintain property values, you know, in the town and the quality of the town generally, but you know, it's a national priority of having an educated workforce. So you know, schools are treated differently. And the issue is, you know, how can we sort of work between the schools and the town in such a way that you know, that the schools, you know, articulate and explain, you know, why they're making budget decisions one way or another. And and that's the problem that we have. They haven't done that very well, so.
So it seems we have transitioned to sort of making our comments on this, which is okay. I take that as a sign that we don't have any more questions for Lee. And but we also kind of skip past the first question, which is, do we feel that we should take a vote on this as a Select Board? And I'm going to guess that that the folks here tonight from the Select Board, yes, feel that we should take a vote on this. Chaz, are you anxious to speak?
I did just want to flag for you, John, that if you're going to take a vote, you should announce, just for everyone's clarity, that it is a public hearing. Open it, close it, make sure the public has an opportunity to comment.
Oh, all right. That's a very important nuance that I will confess I had completely skipped over. So that does change the nature of this. It's not just a discussion on the board. It's going to be a public hearing. And so we will open the hearing at this point. And Kate, I'm going to look for indications from any of the folks who are here as attendees as to whether they would like to comment. And I see a hand from Neil Gordon. So we will start with him. And any others who wish to comment after Neil, go ahead and get your hands up now. And we'll call on you next.
Neil has been promoted. Neil, you've been promoted to a panelist. You are able to speak and use your video if you choose to.
Thank you. Let me just say that say this quickly. The one thing that I didn't hear is the the clear, unambiguous statutory obligation and authority that the Advisory Committee has under state law and under the town bylaws to receive a budget from the Superintendent of Schools and the Town Administrator, the authority to review books and records, and the obligation to to recommend the Warren article for the budget to Town Meeting. Right? This is, the school committee is nowhere mentioned in the bylaw. I can't speak for state law. I haven't looked. But let's not deny that this is not a proper task and proper exercise for the Advisory Committee. The bylaw is quite clear. The Advisory Committee responsibility and authority here is quite clear. And please just don't deny that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Carolyn Thall has her hand up.
Carolyn is being promoted as a panelist. Carolyn, you've been promoted. You can unmute yourself and share your video if you choose.
Carolyn, you're still muted.
Thank you, Chaz. Carolyn Thall, Town Meeting Member in Precinct 16. I'm also new Advisory Member, relatively new. I put my name on the amendment for this article, which I think was responsive, the amendment was responsive to feedback, particularly from school committee in terms of potential for collaborating on this. I guess I just want to say I find it a little regrettable that somehow, really in the last 24 hours or so, this has kind of become a bit of a brouhaha. I think there's been a lot of unfortunate misinformation and even really personal insinuations about what this is about, that that are different from what my understanding of it was from hearing about it in advisory and thinking about it. I'm a direct stakeholder in the public schools of Brookline. I have been for 12 years. I will be for another four years if all goes according to plan. So I have a strong interest in the public schools spending lots of money on on teaching and learning. What I saw here was an attempt to respond to really the near crisis level things that have been happening in Town Meeting with the budget. We had, we unbalanced the budget last spring. Um, there's a lot of competing interests, um, and I don't see things, um, being holistic right now. Like, I don't know that the left hand knows what the right hand is doing all the time. Um, and I appreciated, um. The, 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 the perspective that this brought to just suggest that there might be, um, questions to ask or a way of asking questions about how. The school budget is developed, um, and vetted that haven't been asked for a while. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Carolyn Thall. Uh, and Mike Sammon, you have your hand up and I don't see any attendees who have their hands up, so why don't you go ahead, Mike?
Right, I just, I, I do want to point out, uh, and appreciate what Count has, uh, has said. Um. Do want to point out that the school subcommittee of the advisory committee has typically gone in-depth into the school budget, sometimes to the point of line by line. Uh, and I was chair of that subcommittee for, uh, several years. And I remember spending, uh, a full day, uh, trying to figure out what the heck the school budget said. Uh, because at the time it was opaque and it's become very substantially less opaque and, uh, and it's not perfect by any means, but the, um. My experience with the people on that, um, on that committee, uh, all of them, uh, is that they do their homework and so it seems to me like. Um, the advisory committee might turn to that subcommittee before it turns outside. Um, and that's it.
Thank you, Mike. I don't see any other hands up among the attendees. Bernard, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I, I guess maybe I missed it, but I don't think I really heard an answer to the question of why can't we use the current, uh, structures to, to deal with. Or to do what, uh, this consultant, uh, would do. I mean, not only advisory committee subcommittee, which, you know, uh, like Mike says, does a very thorough job. Uh, and, you know, should be, you're reporting back to the full advisory committee what it finds. And is a member of the town school partnership, which may not be a formal body, but still is a body that has a role in this process. So I mean, it looks to me like we have the structures in place, we just need to sort of make them work a little better than they may have been working in the past.
Can I try to?
Concerns that, uh, you have, pardon me?
Can I try to answer that question? That's what I had, but, um. Um, I don't think there is any predisposition. And certainly the politicians had no, no predisposition. That we would in fact conclude that we're gonna hire a consultant, that we're gonna pay that consultant some amount of money. Um, it, it. We may well conclude that in fact this is something that could be accomplished in-house. But the issue is we need, I think what, what we're trying to get at is we need a different approach. Because right now, even though the school commi-, the school's subcommittee has, has in fact. Routinely tried to do a deep dive. At the end of the day, they're still looking at a total aggregate budget for the schools that has been dictated to them. And I have, I have no recollection in the, in the dozen years or so that I've been on AC where that number ever was questioned. And I think what we're simply trying to do is find a way to, to reconcile. The schools' needs against the unfilled needs of town departments, which the people of Brookline also rely on. In addition to the schools. So if, if you're gonna vote against this because you think that we're gonna automatically come up with a, with a, a big number for a consultant, that, that is, is not the case. We may well conclude that we, we can handle it in-house or that we don't need to spend very much money on a consultant.
Okay, um, any further comments from board members, uh, before we first, uh, vote on whether we want to take a position on this article? And I don't see.
Well, my, my hand is up and I was actually gonna.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike. Huh?
Yeah, I was gonna move that we, uh, take up consideration of this article and I will subsequently move, uh, uh, a recommendation for no action.
For no action.
Uh, I second.
All right, so.
John, you might want to close the public hearing first.
But, yeah, we will, we will now close the, uh, public hearing and, and we will move on to, uh, select board action one way or the other on this. And the first vote to be taken is, should we take a position on this? Go ahead, Bernard.
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, can I ask a question that, uh, raised by Lee? So if, uh, if, if the, uh, there's a possibility that you won't hire a consultant. Uh, and that everything will be done in-house, why, why do we need this Warren article?
Because we need a, a structure of how we should be looking at. The relationship between the school budget and the rest of the town budget. And that's what this is trying to get at.
Okay, um, all right, moving on, uh. It's been a second, it's just removed a second that the board actually take a position on this. Um, all those in favor, Bernard?
Uh, we're, we're voting no action, uh, yes.
No, no, well, no.
Yeah, we're just taking a second.
You're voting that we will take a position on this first.
I'm sorry, I gave you advanced warning of where I'm going. Uh, yes.
Okay, uh, this is a vote to take action on this. Miriam?
Aye.
Uh, Mike?
Aye.
And, uh, I vote, the vice chair votes I as well. All right, and now, uh, does anyone want to call for a vote, um, on the substance?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll move, uh, recommendation and no action.
Recommendation, no action. And Miriam seconds. Um, and Bernard, um, uh, your vote?
Aye.
And I'm sorry, uh, Miriam, your vote?
Aye.
Mike, your vote?
Aye.
The reason for my hesitation was I suddenly realized that I'm the only person who hasn't spoken out on this yet. Um, and I am gonna vote I, uh, but I'm gonna, uh, indulge myself in, in a very brief explanation of why. Um, uh, a- as a former advisory committee chair, um, I'm very much in sympathy with the need to take a, uh, a, a, a more of a look, um, at, at the school, school side of, um, of our spending. Um, because it is so proportionately large in what we do and we do have the possibility of a override coming up on the ballot. Um, I, I, I think I'm in sympathy also though with the lot, the many questions that have been raised as to whether this is necessary in order for the advisory committee to do that. So I, I'm all in favor of a vigorous look at the school budget by the advisory committee, but I think I'm in agreement with my, uh, other board members that, uh, we don't need this article in order for that to happen. And, uh, so I'm gonna join them in voting I and thank you for indulging me in that comment. Um, that is, as far as I know, all of our business for tonight. Chaz, is there anything else we need to bring up?
Nope, you're, you're in the clear.
All right then.
Oh, you, I'm sorry, John, you should, are you gonna pick someone to speak on this?
Uh, well, I'm gonna say Mike Sandman, I think is, uh, anxious to volunteer for that role. So Mike, is that still true?
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
Okay, do you, do a good job.
I will do my best, thank you.
Okay, uh, and, uh, thank you to those who have been in attendance. Thank you those watching and, um, I think we are ready to adjourn for, until we, uh. See each other once again at town meeting. Um, all those in favor of a journey, uh, Bernard?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And myself, I. All right, see you folks at town meeting.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.